The first item is our ongoing presentation regarding reviewing various departments' budgets. Mr. Brady, I see we've got three great departments queued up. Is there anything we need to say before we just start hearing these presentations?
These are three great departments, Mayor, like you said it. So we're here to give you those presentations. We'll start with Development Services and then Library and Arts and Culture.
Wow, it's gonna be, I feel, I pity whoever has to follow Christine Zalanka.
You are going to be fascinated, sir.
I know, that's what I'm saying. The bar is gonna be so high, I don't know how the rest of the money's gonna go.
We like to keep the bar low, you know that. Good morning, Mayor, council members, Councilmember Glover. I'm Christine Zalanka with Development Services Department. I have Chase Carlisle here with me today, our fiscal analyst, and I have the rest of our management team in the audience, should you have any specific questions. I am gonna go through this fairly quickly, so if you do have questions as I'm going through, please just yell out and I'll find somebody that can answer it. The overall mission of Development Services is to facilitate the high-quality, attractive, and healthy development of our community, both new development, infill, and reuse of existing facilities. The, just a quick org chart that we've got here, we've got three main areas in Development Services. Planning really chronologically starts at the beginning of the process. They're responsible for analyzing the general plan, which informs the overall development patterns throughout the city. You typically see rezoning cases, site plan cases coming through. They also work on design review and historic preservation. Just to give you a forewarning, if you will, one of the other things you're gonna see within the next couple of months is the updated sign code. Gordon Sheffield, our zoning administrator, has been working diligently on that for quite a while, so you'll be hearing about that. The second area, oh, and just to remind you that John Wesley, our planning director, is over at the planning group. Building permits, we're responsible for reviewing the actual improvement plans, doing the inspections, and also working as a central point of contact for the other departments on infrastructure, that being transportation, water resources, engineering. I have Steve Heather here and Beth Hughes Unalis, who are our deputy directors. Steve is our very short-time building official. This will probably be the last council meeting that he's at. He thinks he's moving off into the sunset. And Beth handles the development planning piece. Code compliance, we're not gonna spend a lot of time today, we really don't have any budget requests, but Eloy Garza is in the audience somewhere here. He's our code enforcement administrator. Wanted to give you a quick snapshot of just where we are on development activity. I think most of you have seen our permit data every month for the last several years. Last month, we, City of Mesa, actually issued more peanut, permits, excuse me, than, peanuts also. More permits than the City of Mesa. What this, I'm sorry, let me try again. We issued more permits than the City--
The bar's getting lower.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Well, I'm trying to help everybody else. We issued more permits than Phoenix.
That's a big deal.
It is, yay, all right. What this graph shows is the kind of year-over-year activity levels, going back to 2005. Obviously, the recession that hit us very hard, as you know, we are pretty much the leading at a edge of dealing with economic conditions. And over the last several years, we've seen a significant increase in growth. A couple of things I wanted to point out on this particular graph. You'll see that we continue to see a very high level of development in residential. This is primarily in Councilmember Thompson and Councilmember Luna's districts in northeast and southeast Mesa. The commercial activity, which is kind of the dark red on the bottom, that's a commercial activity. We have not yet seen a significant uptick. We kind of are bouncing around the bottom on that. There are some leading indicators at this point that commercial may be coming back, but at this point, we haven't seen an awful lot of it. The blue on the top, I just wanted to point out, is actually--
The pre-submittals.
The pre-submittals. What that indicates, the pre-submitting process, when John and his staff look at the projects that really aren't even, haven't taken shape yet. So there's a lot of activity and staff time that go into the pre-submitting phase, but oftentimes, they never actually end up in a project or a permit. The purple line that you see there are the approximate number of staff that we've had. What's pretty shocking there is that the current staffing levels that we have dealing with activity that's equivalent to 2005, we have about half as many staff members as we did back in 2005. And we're gonna talk a little bit about that. The increase that you see in 2013-14, we did add a few staff members at that time as we saw the continuing increase in development activity.
I'm sorry, Christine, we have--
Yes, sir.
--a quick question for you.
Hey, Christine Zalanka, how are you?
I'm fine, Councilmember Luna.
You're doing a great job, by the way. With the electronic processing, is that facilitated in terms of permitting and those kind of activities? Is that why we're seeing an increase, or, tell me a little bit about that?
Okay.
Or maybe I jumped ahead.
Well, you did, but that's okay. We are actually moving forward with the development of a software system. We have been doing a pilot program for approximately the last six months, where we've been taking in electronic plans. Actually, it's through a SharePoint site, so it's not quite as streamlined as we'd like to see it. But we do have the ability to take in electric plans, so folks don't have to print off four copies of 24-by-36 rolls and we send them around. A great example of that is actually the Apple facility. We took in one plan set that was, what, 700 sheets, I think? Took them all in electronically and reviewed them that way. But I am going to talk about the new electronic system that we're moving forward on. We anticipate eventually that that will result in increased savings, not only on staff time, but also, more significantly, on the developer's side, that they won't have to bear the cost of printing, they won't have to bring the plans actually down to the City of Mesa, they'll be able to pay electronically. So the idea there is really improving the efficiency of the whole development process through the use of technology. Councilmember--
Mr. Winkle.
Is the number of permits pulled, so is an apartment complex, let's say, of 100 units, is that one permit? Where like a house is one permit, let's say?
I'm trying to answer that, Steve. An apartment complex, is that one permit per building or individual units?
Councilmember, that would be each individual unit gets, or, not, each individual building gets a permit. So you could have any number of units in that particular building on an apartment complex. And then, of course, houses, each house gets its own permit.
Okay, so if we're going up, let's say, in the downtown area, and there's a one footprint, that's one permit essentially?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Obviously, the value of the permit is going to change drastically. And also, the complexity of the plan review and the inspections when you have a mid-rise or a high-rise or a multifamily facility as opposed to a single-family. The one thing I wanted to show on this graph, the blue line is actually the number of plan sets that are in the system for review, and the red line are the number of permits that have been issued. The story that I wanted to tell there is, that's an indication of the workload that is building up. A couple of weeks ago, we had over 300 plan sets that were waiting to be reviewed in the department. The one thing that my staff does a tremendous job on, we have guaranteed turnaround times. For commercial plan review, it's 18 days, residential, it's 10 days. We do have expedited and super expedited if somebody wants to come to the head of the line. We maintain compliance with that turnaround time about 99% of the time, but obviously, there's a lot of pressure on staff here when you've got 300 plan sets sitting there waiting for your review. Indication of the early indicator on development activity is actually in John's area. If you see the significant increase in numbers of planning cases here from 2013, we had approximately 650 cases. We're projecting that through the end of 2017, we'll probably be close to 1,000 cases coming through the planning for the early entitlement phases. One of the areas that we're actually quite concerned about, this is the inspections. We look at benchmarking data from other cities and organizations. We actually use ICMA as an indicator of the reasonable number of inspections per inspector per day. ICMA recommends, that's 10 inspections per inspector today. As you see, for the last several months, we've been well over 20 inspections per day for each inspector. That creates some obvious challenges as far as the time per inspection, the windshield time, that kind of thing. But again, indication of the level of activity that continues to be up there.
Mr. Thompson.
Christine, when you have, when you have that high of inspections per day, how much of the total project is actually being inspected? Is it just you're showing up, doing the basics, and out you go? Or you really, are the inspectors, do the inspectors have enough time to really look and ensure that the product is a quality product, that there's no issues, that there's no potential future danger or anything like that?
Certainly, our top goal is always life safety, and the life safety of those buildings. We actually do numerous inspections on every building, whether it's a single-family home or a high-rise or multifamily, starting at the foundation, the grading, the footings, the structural, electrical, plumbing. So an inspector goes to the same facility numerous times during the course of construction. Obviously, they need to look at plumbing and electrical before the drywall goes up. So we, our goal certainly is to look at everything. Does that always happen if you're trying to get through 20-plus inspections a day? Sometimes, that's a quick inspection, but we do the best job we possibly can on it.
Mr. Luna.
Just as a follow-up to Councilmember Thompson, how many inspectors do we have and do we have enough inspectors to meet the needs of our city?
Ten? We currently have 10 inspectors and two supervisors that work under Steve Heather. As to the question, is that enough, again, when we look at the data here, the ICMA benchmarking is 10 inspections per day. We're almost well over twice that amount, and actually, we are, you'll see a little bit later, keep getting ahead of me, that we are looking at a couple of additional inspectors to help with that workload. Just one sort of philosophical statement, we try to be very conservative, and have been for the last several years, in our projections of what growth is going to be. So you will have seen over the last several years that we're not anticipating, you know, that the economy is gonna continue to go like this. We work with the city manager, with our budget office, on projections of what growth actually is gonna be for the next year or two, but we're obviously still living in fairly volatile times, so we, it's a balancing act, quite frankly. And to go to, oh, yes, one more here. Document retrieval is kind of a, oh, would you like to ask me a question, sir? Okay. Document retrieval is kind of an interesting part of the process. One of the services that we provide to the development community is to recover documents for development that's already occurred. This is primarily in Beth Hughes's area. The majority of the activity is actually from developers looking for, where's the sewer line, where's the water line, where are the connection points, what does the road look like? Those documents are not and will not be available to the public for good reason. So one of the things that we provide is a document retrieval service. Somebody comes in, say, a developer wanting to know in southeast Mesa, where's the sewer line, how long, how far do I have to drag it in, where's the water line? We actually work with engineering and go back, pull copies of those plans. Hopefully, at some point, we'd be able to transmit them electronically, but that's a service that the development community is constantly asking for, so they can manage their development, so it hooks up to the sewer, they know what their costs are associated with that. We also do have some activity, both for single-family residential and commercial, where you've got an old building, they have no idea what the plans actually were for that building, maybe they want to do an addition, maybe they want to do an enhancement. They'll come in and, again, ask for copies of those plans, and the city has maintained those. Mid-year adjustments that the city manager's office has already approved going to your point, Councilmember Luna, on our levels of, or, our resources. We have added one planer one, and this is really to help John Wesley's group. We have a, continue to have an awful lot of folks that come in, they want to know what the zoning is on a particular parcel, what they're entitled to do, what their setbacks need to be, how high a building they can build. And oftentimes, that's still someone at the front counter talking to them, or perhaps if they call in. So we're adding one planer one that can answer those sort of immediate, over-the-counter questions. We're also adding a building plans examiner to help with the actual plan review workload. And then, we're converting one part-time senior plans examiner. Several years ago, council asked us to provide an over-the-counter service for basically mom-and-pop, single-family residents, that they don't have the professional engineers, architects, they really need a lot more personalized service. That has been a very successful program, but what we are actually experiencing over the last couple of years, there's been an awful lot of requests from small businesses for that same kind of assistance. We've had one of our senior plans examiner spending probably 30% to 40% of their time at the front counter, working with small businesses on answering their questions. So it seemed that it was the time to make that into a full-time position and offer that immediate assistance to small businesses, working in conjunction with economic development on encouraging and trying to facilitate that process, as well as the single-family, mom-and-pop kinds of operations. We are asking in this budget year for two additional positions. That would be a building inspector two, again, Councilmember Luna, to your point exactly, to deal with the workload on inspections. And then, another area that we've really seen increase over the last year or two, it's primarily through the work that Eloy has done in collaboration with the police department, the fire department, and also Steve Heather. When we have large unsafe buildings, we've had some criminal activity where, from a building inspection, unsafe structure, we've been able to work collaboratively with the police department to actually go in and deal very effectively with those buildings. So this senior inspector, that would be part of their task, is to deal with those structures as well as meet workload. The other position that we're asking for is an administrative assistant. One of our major efforts over the last probably five years has been digital conversion of hard copy plans. We have been working on the planning side of it. To date, we've converted approximately 12,000 documents. I messed up, didn't I? I come, it's coming up. Okay, I messed that up.
Document retrieval.
Oh, document retrieval, I'm sorry. Okay. An administrative assistant to work on the document retrieval that we just talked about. I think we misnamed it there. We also have several projects that we're looking to add in the 17-18 budget. I'll go in a little bit of detail about those. One of the, the sort of results of the recession and our reduced resources, we have not updated our codes. We live under the International Code Council, family of codes, plumbing, structural, that kind of thing, and also the National Electrical Code. Our codes, you see this chart here, National Electrical Code, we're on the 2005 version. The International Codes, we're at the 2006 versions. If you see the other cities, we are way behind. This has caused some problems for the development community. The typical thing that you hear is, we want consistency across the region, so we're behind on the codes. Plus, the newer codes do provide some flexibility that the older codes don't have. So one of the projects we'd like to do over this next year is actually work to get council adoption of the current ICC and NEC codes. Another project--
Mr. Thompson.
With the ICCs, are the developers still submitting on, what they're bringing, is it meet the 2011 codes? Are they following other cities' codes and submitting 2011, and we're adapting to that? Or are they specifically turning in projects that are following the 2005 or 2006 codes?
That's a great question, and it's kind of a hybrid answer, since the council-adopted codes in Mesa are the '05 and '06. That's kind of the baseline. But what Steve and his staff do an excellent job, if somebody comes in and there's maybe some additional options under one of the newer codes, Steve, as the building official, can actually authorize code modifications, but that requires looking at the newer code, and then, he is a professional, actually making a decision, okay, this particular solution meets the intent of the code. So it's more time-consuming, quite frankly, and makes it a little more difficult for the development community as opposed to having those standard codes.
So how quickly can you get the ICC codes updated and to council for approval?
We anticipate that that will probably be a six-to-seven-month process. One of the first things that we need to do is analyze the differences between our current codes, what the new code is, so that we can explain what the differences are. We also have what are called Mesa amendments under the city code, so there's certain things that, you know, Mesa does differently than the other cities. So we need somebody to go through, analyze the codes, understand the differences, make recommendations as to which code we should go with. It also requires pretty extensive training, quite frankly, with our own staff, with our building plans examiners and our inspectors. And then, we also do a tremendous amount of outreach to the development community as we move through adopting those codes, to encourage the engineers, the architects, the developers to come in and actually be educated and trained on what the changes are in the code. So, again, probably a six-to-seven-month process is what we're looking at. Digital document conversion, which is what I tried to talk about a couple minutes ago. In planning, we have converted or digitized almost 12,000 documents of hard plans, so they're now available in our electronic system, that if you want to look at the plans for your house, you can go in and you can pull them up electronically, you never have to come and talk to us. We currently have approximately 52,000 sets of building improvement plans. I was going to show you pictures of our plan room, but in the interest of time, I decided not to bore you with that. But it's really a huge project, and we feel it's critical as we move into trying to do everything electronically, when people still have to come in and get a hard copy of an old plan set. It's not very efficient, either for the developer, or quite frankly, for city staff, because it takes the equivalent of a librarian, really, to go in, find the plan set, bring them out, make copies, and then get them back in the same system so that somebody else can find them again. So that's another project that we are, is in our baseline budget and has been approved, but we're asking for your approval.
Christine, are you doing that in-house, or is that being outsourced?
We're actually using temporary employees to do that, and one of the things that we've found, again, there's, we need to do quality control, you can't have temps just coming in and scanning everything, because it's the old garbage-in, garbage-out kind of thing. So we need staff to do that quality control function, make sure that the case files are cleaned up, that we don't have duplicate documents, documents that we don't need. But our current model is that we bring in temp workers, so once the program is done, we don't have full-time positions that are no longer needed.
I was just curious, because I know there's companies out there that will do the scanning, they'll do the QA piece, they'll do the whole nine yards for you, and I'm just wondering if we've looked at that, because it could be cheaper than paying temps and then using internals to do the OQ.
We actually looked at that, and we were honestly shocked at the cost of outsourcing it. It was several times higher than the cost of using the temps. We've determined that using temporary workers to do it in-house is the most cost-effective option, but we did look at that. We talked to several companies that do that kind of work, and the numbers were much higher. One of the other projects that we're looking at, Councilmember Luna, finally getting to your question, we are moving towards a new enterprise-wide permitting system that includes everything from development services, plan review from engineering, transportation, water resources, PD alarms, fire alarms, business services. We anticipate, as that system goes live, that a number of our customers will need special assistance on understanding how it works. They need to figure out how to get in, get registered, upload their documents. So we're anticipating that for probably the first six or seven months of that new system, we really will need somebody in the department that has the ability. A new engineer comes in, he hasn't submitted plans for the last two years, to help them understand how to get into that electronic system. We are doing training for our development community, actually, it's next week, to share with them how to get into the system, how to work within it, but we know that there's going to be an ongoing need for that kind of assistance. Another, two programs that we are looking at as projects, these have actually both come to council, and you told us you wanted us to do them, and unfortunately, because of the workload, we've not managed to get it done, Councilmember Thompson. One of the first one is the creation of quality design guidelines for both residential and commercial. John Wesley was here probably about a year ago at SAT, maybe a little over a year ago, presented a kind of a matrix on how really to encourage that quality design. Again, we simply have not had a chance to complete that project, so we're thinking if we bring someone in and have them specifically work on that, we can get it done. The other program that we brought to you, Angelica Guevara and myself, again, about a year ago, was adaptive reuse of existing buildings. There's a few excellent examples of things we've already done. Benedictine, the old Southwest Hospital is a great example. The Alhambra Hotel, that Jeff McVay actually took the lead in. We've got one currently, the old Kmart building at Main and Lindsay. New Ross is going in there, so you had an old strip mall, huge building that sat vacant with no sales tax for years, but we've really had to work with them to figure out how their bottom line works as far as the standard, city development standards. So that's another area that we really want to kind of package, what the options are, the pros and cons on the city standards, and how we can perhaps provide some flexibility for adaptive reuse of existing buildings. Wanted to give you a quick summary of our actual budget, and this is comparing 15-16 through our estimated 17-18. Few things that I wanted to point out here, if you look at the 11,008 number from 15-16 on the revenue side, the reason that that one is higher relative to 16-17, that was actually the Apple building, when they came in, and they also did just about everything expedited, so that was unanticipated revenue, but it was kind of a one-time-only deal. The 15-16 also, that number is higher, the 12,008, primarily because of expedited reviews. Again, we don't project expedited, but when they come in, we do our very best to handle them. What we're looking at at the estimated budget for 17-18 is approximately a 5% increase in activity levels over the adopted budget for 16-17. So again, we're trying to be very conservative with only going 5%. Our actual increase this year over last year to date is about 7% more activity than what we were seeing last year. You look like maybe you have a question?
No, I'm just pondering how significant your presentation is, so it's great.
Is that good or bad?
Keep going.
Okay, all right, moving on. Okay, quick summary of expenses here. Again, we're pretty consistent in our expenses. The big change, or the big increase that you see in 16-17 was actually our technology replacement project. That's essentially a one-time contract. It's actually funded by the technology fee, that's a portion of every permit fee. We're working collaboratively with the information technology department and business services, but the money is actually the technology fee that won't be an ongoing expense. This is a real quick look, I kind of like this one, because it graphically shows where we're at for the three years. What you see here, the sort of orange on the top, those are our expedited revenues. Again, we don't project those, because we don't know what's going to come in on expedited, but the actual revenues for 16-17 compared to 15-16 consistently have gone up. What you see on the crosshatch portion, that's actually the department's coverage of our indirect expenses. And that's, sir? Yes, sir.
Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Christine, great presentation, by the way. As far as your expedited process, do you have enough staff to meet those needs? Let's say we get a lot of people wanting expedited services. Do you, what do you do in terms of balancing your staff needs and being able to accomplish those expedited requests? those expedited requests?
That is an excellent question and is constantly a challenge. Because of the staff resources that have been devoted this past year to our technology enhancement project, there have been a few times where Mr. Heather has had to say, "We cannot accept any more expedited projects." We do have some of our normal clients that just about everything comes in expedited. We try really hard. I have a couple of tools. We do have folks that we can bring them in on Friday and pay them overtime to try to do that. We can, on occasion, have temporary workers come in for a specific project and work that. So it's really kind of a combination of tools. But this year, we actually have had a few times where we've had to tell the development community that we cannot do expedited because we simply don't have the resources.
Mr. Thompson?
I've got several questions. How's the Friday addition that we did about a year ago? How's that working out?
Actually, it's working out really well for our department. We typically have a supervisor, which is a management team volunteer opportunity. And then we have a permit tech who actually knows how to work the system. We have been getting right around 20. It kind of depends on the time of year. For the holidays, had a little significant decrease, but we're there from eight to 12 or 12-plus if somebody walks in at five to 12. We have some of our regular customers that know we're open on Friday. They know the lines are shorter. We have many fewer customers, but we have fewer staff. We only offer essential services. So we can take plans in, we can issue permits if the plans are approved, and of course, we can take fees in.
Awesome. And then for Mr. Garza's area, I know that we had a lot of volunteers that were helping and then we transitioned off because there were some issues. Are we working back through those issues and are we going to get those volunteers back up and running again, helping out with our code compliance?
I'll let Eloy speak to that. But one of the programs that we, we actually ended up having some challenges with were our sign code volunteers. Eloy made a determination, there were enough problems, we need to kind of reconstitute that. That was the major area volunteers, but if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, I actually got an email yesterday. We have several residents who basically on their own initiative have volunteered. Got an email from a gentleman who's kind of taken responsibility of his own area, collected about 198 signs, bandit signs for clarification, that are completely legal. So we have pockets of folks who have just taken an initiative. I've encouraged HOAs and neighborhoods to do that, and we've gone out and educated them. So we haven't formally committed to a volunteer program where I have folks reporting to me. But again, I've asked the neighborhoods to take the own initiative and walk out and also engage, you know, in their neighborhoods, you know, look for crime and pick up signs. So that's how we've engaged that.
And then Christine, one of my last questions, I guess, and we talk quite frequently about this, is the number of permits that you have coming in, the number of people that you have working with you. And, you know, I still, and I know you're doing everything you can and sort your people, but I still get comments from the development community about asking if Mesa is really open for business. And it drives me crazy when I hear the stories from developers because if we're going to say Mesa's open for business, then it has to be more than lip service. And we're, you know, we're getting, it seems like there's barriers being thrown up everywhere to kind of slow stuff down a little bit, just so staff can catch up. And it gets irritating sometimes when developers all of a sudden start coming to me asking for help, getting, you know, pushing through permits or whatever needs to be done. So what do you need on your side so that we truly can be open for business and help process permits and get developers up and running? Because, I mean, I know in my district, growth is going crazy. It's like land all of a sudden has gold on it and it's a hot commodity and everybody wants to be there. And I don't see that going away anytime soon. So what do we need or what do you need to take care of the development community, but also to do the things that we've asked for through SAT and some other things? Because, you know, the, one of the things that we, that, you know, certainty is something that developers absolutely love. And having a guideline that tells you what quality is to John Wesley and what are some of the development things that we'll accept, I think that brings that certainty to the developers. And then they'll be willing to really come to Mesa and work in Mesa and probably not, excuse me, probably not call me, asking if we really are open for business. So what do you need so that you can get the things out that previous councils have asked for, that this council has asked for, that development community is asking for? So what is your, you know, what is your true, what do you need?
Okay. I feel compelled to answer the first part of the question, if you don't mind. You're right, it's very easy for particular developers to come and say, "Well, the city is throwing up all kinds of roadblocks and we can't get our permit through." We keep statistics on how often, the frequency that we meet our guaranteed turnaround times. That's in excess of 99% of the times. Part of the problem, and honestly, with our larger community, our larger developers, we work with this, we need 100% approvable plans when they walk in the door. In fact, we were just having this conversation internally. Typically, when I get that question from you, I will ask, as in demand, the owner and their development team come in together because oftentimes, there's a little bit of miscommunication. What was the quality of the plan that was submitted? What was the guaranteed turnaround time? I had one yesterday, as you well know. We looked at it, the turnaround or the guaranteed time to get it out was next week. We looked at it and said, "It's Councilmember Thompson, we can get it out." But that one happened to be a good set of plans and there were very few corrections on it. The things that we do, and we work with Carrie all the time, when we get to a point where we simply can't meet the demand, we will be back at the city manager's office asking for additional resources. And that's why you see the midterm additions that we've already added this year and the request for additional FTEs as well as the specific projects. And quite frankly, we accomplish those by bringing in temporary workers working with our staff to get those completed.
And then some of the, like the quality list that we were working on in SAT, where's that at and what do you need to do? What do you need so that John can be freed up to finish that out?
We actually have a group that's working on it. Veronica Gonzalez is our executive manager right now, and she's taking the lead on that program. We are actually putting the scope of work together, so we'll have that out on the street. It's probably, well, there may be multiple private companies that can help us with that because, again, we want to do the design guidelines, looking at best practices across the country, what makes sense here, as well as the adaptive reuse. So we're in the process of putting that scope of work together and getting it out on the street. As soon as the budget is adopted this year, and we know we have the money to do it, that's our goal, is to have a team onboard as quickly as possible after the beginning of the new fiscal year. But we're, again, working on the scope of work right now for that.
Perfect. Thank you. Additional questions? Mr. Freeman?
Thanks, Christine. Looking at the dashboard, you said of daily inspections, 23 to 27 inspections per day per inspector. That's quite a bit. And my question is, do we ever interface with other, like large expansion industrial commercial complexes and projects where there are private inspectors on the sites and then your inspectors interface with them? And so it kind of streamlines the process on larger complexes? Do, like, any of the expansions or projects hire private inspectors so that you shorten your time onsite for large projects?
A couple of answers to that. Yes, we do have what are called special inspections. Steve will correct me if I'm wrong. Those typically are more complex projects and we actually tell the developer that their engineer of record, their PE, needs to sign off on a special inspection, and then we just accept that into the system. We have a couple of programs. The annual facilities permit is one of them. We work that with SDI, where we've got an inspector who knows their system as well as they do, probably. So when they need something, we've got somebody there right on time. An interesting example of kind of a hybrid of that, when Banner was doing so much expansion, both at Desert Sam and Baywood, we actually had somebody that they paid for. And we committed that that person would be available to them, basically 24/7. So rather than the normal 24 hours, you call in, "I need an inspection," we get there tomorrow, we were there in 15 minutes. So we've worked that. We have looked at outsourcing that in the past also.
But Christine, talk about the program you have. I know it's more for the architects where they can get certified.
Yes, we do have the self-certification program. We worked with council probably three-ish, two, three years ago, on the self-certification program. That goes more to the plan portion of it. It's interesting, we've had some applicants take advantage of that. We modeled it almost exclusively on the Phoenix model. Anybody, or primarily architects and engineers, professionals that are qualified and have gone through the Phoenix program, we said, "If you're in the Phoenix program, you can do it in Mesa." We've been...
What do they do, Christine? What is it? What does it...
They basically, they put their plans together, they certify, which they kind of do anyway, when they stamp the plans.
Right, exactly.
That it meets the basic code requirements. We have a five-day audit where we take a quick look at it. It's not nearly as extensive as we would for normal plans. So that's out there. It's been out there. All somebody has to do is come in and ask to participate in it. We don't really, we had some initial outreach to the development community, but we've seen kind of a limited response to that. We have in the past looked at outsourcing. There are architectural and engineering firms out there. What we have found on that, and we've actually talked to a number of our developers about that, those firms tend, no offense to the private sector, but they tend not to be as responsive on being flexible on standards. And also, we found that it was pretty difficult for us to get the quick turnaround time that we need. We continue to look at those options and see what's out there. We're always open to it, but at this point in time, we haven't found that sort of outsourcing of the inspection piece has been a huge benefit to us. We have brought in temporary workers that work with Steve's staff to do those inspections when we need to.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Glover has a question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Christine, quick question. What is our planning division, the staff size in relation or in comparison to some of our sister cities like Tempe and Gilbert?
John will answer that.
Mayor, Councilmember Glover, we have looked at that a little bit. I wasn't prepared with those exact numbers now in my head, but our staff size is a little smaller as we look at the surrounding cities. And again, I'm sorry, I could get those numbers to you, but it seems like as we look at, you know, Gilbert or Chandler, Tempe, Scottsdale, their staff sizes are equal to or more than ours for the same responsibilities.
We could certainly follow up and get, one of the things we've looked at, although it's been a while, is sort of the planner per capita, if you will. Currently, the planning staff has 12 professional planners on staff, and that is everything from planning assistants up to Tom Ellsworth, who's the principal planner, and then John Wesley. We are a lean operation, I'll be honest with you, in the planning area. They are very much a production operation of getting the cases to P&amp;Z and to council, design review board. So it's, they are quite, they're challenged from a resource standpoint. I think we need to be honest about that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Did you want us to follow up with that data, sir?
Yes, I would appreciate that.
Okay, we'll do that.
And frankly, I'd be curious to see us compared to Phoenix as well, because I think, frankly, that's who we're being compared with right now. We're issuing more building permits than Phoenix with, I would speculate, you know, much smaller staff.
We have a significantly smaller staff as far as planners per capita than Phoenix does.
Mr. Thompson?
Well, and Christine, I just want to thank you and your group for what you do because I know you're, you get stressed sometimes with the demands of, I think, all of us and get pulled in at least seven different directions. So I commend you and your staff for the, for what you're able to do with what you have. And again, I would encourage you not to, and I know you wouldn't be, but don't be afraid to reach out and let us know what you truly need to get the job done.
Thank you, sir. Carrie hears about our challenges on a regular basis, but we certainly will continue to do that. Again, we try to be very responsive, not only to you, you guys are important, but the development community. And when we have a large developer, we'll take DMB in your area, what we try to do with them is have them come in, give us their schedule. What do you want? When do you want it? That really helps us so that we know what's coming up ahead, and then we can plan resources accordingly, and we will continue to do that.
Mr. Turner?
I also want to echo my colleague here on the Mesa City Council, Kevin Thompson. You know, we've had situations in District 5 as well, where a developer comes in and says the city is resistant, but you've always been very accommodating. You meet with me, you'll meet with the developers to try to mitigate any potential problems or having the project move forward. So I really appreciate that you're doing that. You might want to share with us the data, the data that you cited previously in terms of meeting the demands of the developers so that we have that, we're armed with that. So when the developer comes in, "No, well, this is really the situation here." And certainly, our, your department is certainly willing to meet with you to try to solve or mitigate any potential problems. So thank you for all your hard work and thank you for what you do for our city and as well as your staff.
Thank you, and we will follow up with that data.
And thank you, thank you for your work in terms of code compliance, because I know that's a real difficult challenge as well. We've had many, many issues related to signs, and we've had some very, very passionate people in my district speak about signs and complain about signs. But Eloy's been very effective in working with them, and I appreciate that. And work with your volunteers, I'm sure that you'll provide them the appropriate training to make sure that your program is successful. So thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
Let me just echo, congratulations on being the most productive planning department in the state. We're proud of you. When I hear complaints, I usually ask, "Well, when was the, when was, you promised the plans?" And it's usually a week or two, you know, in the future. And so it's easy to see that sometimes there's impatient people that, I understand, they have a lot of money riding on this, so we want to be very customer service oriented. But I understand that you're doing a great job, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay, I think the next folks on our agenda are library services. Heather, I bet you're back there somewhere. There you are.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. My name is Heather Wolf. I'm the library director.
Oops, I don't want that one.
And Don's going to do the arts and culture department presentation.
Yeah, I'm going to do Cindy's presentation this morning. I'll wing it for you, Cindy.
And this is Don Cusack, the library's management assistant. So I'm going to start the morning with a story about Benjamin Franklin. Not everyone knows that Franklin had just two years of formal education that ended at age 10. So he was a self-educated man. He did it by reading. And if you all can think back to the 1700s, books were not readily available in the American colonies at that time. They were very expensive and they had to be brought over from Europe. So books were difficult to obtain. When he got to Philadelphia, he joined a self-improvement club, and the members were made up of ordinary laborers, tradesmen, farmers, just ordinary people who didn't have a lot of money, and they needed additional books to continue to educate themselves. So Franklin devised a plan, and in 1731, the Library Company of Philadelphia was founded. And in addition to books, the Library Company's collection included the technology of the time, which were microscopes and telescopes. They also carried... They also carried specimens, so they had geological and natural history specimens so that the members could study and experiment. The Library Company chose as its motto a Latin phrase that can be translated to mean to support the common good is divine. And so why am I telling you this story? It's because the Library Company of Philadelphia is the first public library, and it was the largest public library for the first 100 years of its existence. While I wouldn't claim that our mission is divine, I'm proud to say that our staff are very dedicated to improving the quality of life of Mesa residents by providing free access to information and learning opportunities for all ages. All right, our four branches are staffed by 62 full and 27 part-time employees. In addition, our wonderful volunteers have contributed hours equal to 14 and 1/2 employees. In our branches, you will find over 420,000 items, which include books, audiobooks, DVDs, magazines, playways, pretty much any format of material you can think of. And then through our online resources, such as Hoopla, Freegal, and of course, the Greater Phoenix Digital Library, our cardholders have access to over 1, over 11 million songs, ebooks, e-audiobooks, movies, television episodes, comic books, and graphic novels. We provide internet computers and resource computers. The resource computers are things like our early literacy computers in our children's room, our Macs in our ThinkSpot, and computers with word processing that are available for people who need to write resumes or do homework. Finally, ThinkSpot continues to be a hub of learning in our community, with almost 15,000 people passing through the room in fiscal year 14, 15, excuse me, 15, 16, make sure I'm in the right fiscal year. They use the equipment and attended programs, such as ASU Startup School, success with Etsy Business, and the Teen Entrepreneur Camp. We also offered many STEAM programs, such as Introduction to Raspberry Pi, and of course, our Code Club. One of our teen volunteers used ThinkSpot's 3D printer for his science fair project, and I'm proud to say he was awarded first place at the Red Mountain Science and Engineering Fair, first place at the Mesa Unified School District Science and Engineering Fair, and third place at the Arizona State Science and Engineering Fair. And Councilmember Thompson and Vice Mayor Luna, you may remember Skyler from the volunteer appreciation dinner. One of our measures we use to gauge performance is library visits. As you can see, there are ups and downs across the system, except for at Mel, which is our express library. But overall, we are fairly consistent with over 1.1 million visitors per year, despite an issue with undercounting. So I just wanted to explain that our visits are tracked by our security gates, and as the equipment has aged, we've started seeing more gate malfunctions, which just basically means the gates stop counting. Sometimes the gates will be down a day or two, sometimes a week. So we know that these numbers are undercounted, so more than 1.1 million people came through the doors, we just don't have a way of capturing the people that weren't counted those days. Maine replaced its gates last fiscal year, and Red Mountain and Dobson gates were replaced this month. So we hope next year to have a more accurate count. Do we have any questions on that? Programs draw people to the library, and I would like to recognize our 10 programming librarians provided almost 2,000 programs this last fiscal year. They are extremely busy, and I also would like to give a shout out to our Storytime volunteers, like Vice Mayor Luna, and then Councilmember Winkle, who is pictured in the picture here. It really helps us deliver even more programs to our patrons. I'd also like to note that program capacity varies. Some programs, such as the ones during summer reading program, or a visit by author J.A. Jantsch, will fill our largest meeting rooms and will have 200-plus attendees. But other programs can't be done for such large crowds. For example, our computer classes at the Maine Library are done in the computer lab with only 15 computers. And that small class size is really, is the best situation, given the instructional nature of the program. So as a result, our average program attendance is 26 people. And then I have on the slide there that 165 people attend a program daily, so if you average that by the 26, they're spread across about six different programs across our locations. So we're running a lot of programs every day. Okay. And then the last graph I have are circulation numbers. We've separated digital from hard copy, and it is interesting to note that while digital is growing, and we are obviously devoting a lot of resources to this important component, hard copy continues to be the majority of our circulation, and it too is growing. And then looking to the future, we'll be celebrating Dobson Library's 30th anniversary on June 17, and we are so pleased that the interior was updated and the exterior landscaping and the monument sign were refreshed in time for this special anniversary. And I'd like to offer our thanks to Engineering, Parks, Recreation and Community Facilities, and the Environmental Management and Sustainability Departments for their help on this multi-year project. If you haven't seen Dobson recently, please come and visit, it looks really good. Also, I'm excited to announce that we've just been approved for a Category 2 E-Rate Award. The Universal Services Administrative Company, or what we call USAC, has a schools and libraries program, it's commonly known as the E-Rate Program, and it helps ensure that schools and libraries can obtain high-speed internet and telecommunications at affordable rates. In 2015, USAC added Category 2 funding so that schools and libraries could pay just a percentage of the cost to purchase the equipment used to provide internet service. I have to say, the application process was not easy, and it was extremely lengthy in time, but based on the formula, the library qualified for almost $275,000. And so we went ahead and applied, and we got the good news that we were awarded, and now we just need to match 20% of that $275,000. So we'll be able to purchase $275,000 worth of equipment to upgrade our internet equipment, and we only had to pay $55,000. So that contract will be coming to council on May 22. And then, as I was talking earlier, ThinkSpot at the Red Mountain Library continues to be a growing vibrant space in the library, and it is a national model for libraries transforming communities. So we are in the process of constructing a ThinkSpot and teen space at the Maine Library. We've received $100,000 from the Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community, and another $100,000 in community development block grant monies. Construction should start in August, and we hope, Kathy, I can feel her back here, we hope to open in early 2018. And then used book sale money will be used to furnish and equip the rooms. All right. So the library has partnered in new ways this year and received grants for new programs, but I'll highlight just a few from the slide, and you might recognize our Fitbit demonstrator here. And thanks to a generous donation from the Mayo Clinic, library cardholders can now check out a Fitbit or a blood pressure cuff for free from what we are calling the Health Brary. We hope that our borrowers will learn more about their health routines, and then work with their healthcare provider to make adjustments. And then the final one I wanted to highlight on here is playful learning in the park. In response to the city's Early Childhood Education Task Force, the Arizona Natural History Museum, IDEA Museum, Parks, Recreation and Community Facilities, and the library partner to create playful learning in the park, which is an early learning program that met twice a week in a local park for six weeks. And the last session was just yesterday, so I don't have all of the data yet. However, from our survey responses received so far, we can see that we reached our target audience, yeah, excuse me, target audience of preschool-aged children not currently enrolled in preschool, and that the parents were very appreciative of the opportunity to learn techniques to help their children prepare for kindergarten. All right. So relatively speaking, the library has a pretty simple budget. We just have a couple of funding sources that are true funding sources, the general fund and our revenues. But I'd like to talk a little bit about what I call the other category. These are dollars that don't come directly to us, however, they make a significant difference in our budget. So for example, the total worth of the materials, services, and equipment that we gain through the E-Rate Program and the Library Assistance Program is close to half a million dollars. So that's a significant benefit to our users. I already spoke a little bit about E-Rate and our Category 2 Award. I just want to emphasize that USAC does not pay us the 80% or the $220,000 to get to that $275,000 award. Instead, we order the equipment and the vendor bills, USAC for 80%, and then us for the remaining 20%. And Category 1 works in a similar way. So USAC...
Mr. Luna.
Heather, can you tell me what that is, USAC?
USAC, so that's the Universal Services Administrative Company, and they are a non, a not-for-profit organization that the FCC uses to distribute $10 billion worth of money with the express goal of improving broadband and internet connectivity in disadvantaged and rural communities. So we qualify because of Mesa Public Schools' free and reduced lunch program.
So that's part of the E-Rate?
Yes, it is part of E-Rate. So, and originally, it was just paying for internet, so like our bill for CenturyLink for our internet, USAC pays them $10,000, and then we only have to pay $2,600 per year for our internet because of E-Rate. Now with Category 2 and the ability to buy equipment, it really opens the doors for libraries and schools to make huge improvements in our ability to provide internet to our community. So, and then finally, I wanted to explain the Library Assistance Program. For those of you who are newer, we have an agreement with the Maricopa County Library District in order to provide library services to any Maricopa County resident. As a result of that, they give us, let's see, they basically set up a deposit account, and we can order materials off of that account. You may have noticed on your Maricopa County property tax bill, there's a library district tax. That goes to the Maricopa County Library District, and they set aside $2.6 million that they then distribute among the affiliate libraries that participate in the program. They have a formula that's based on assessed valuation, as well as on the number of cards we issue to non-residents. Last year, our share was about $230,000, and going forward to next year, they've already projected, and because of the increase in Mesa's assessed valuation, we'll go up to close to 260,000. In addition, the library district is actually looking at enlarging the pie. This hasn't happened in years, and they're looking to increase the $2.6 million to $3 million. If that happens, we'll get $300,000 that we can use to buy library materials. Given that our materials budget is just a little over $500,000, that's a 60% increase, and will be a significant impact for what we can put on the shelf for our residents. So it's a great program. All right. So now we get to the budget numbers. Again, ours is pretty straightforward. You might be wondering what the special program fund is, and that's the library's restricted fund for our used book sales and donations. Those dollars don't go into the general fund, they stay with the library for us to use. Does anybody have any questions on this slide? No? Okay. All right. So I have several additional slides that follow this one, but they were there just more as background, and just in case people had questions. So this ends my presentation.
I have a question. On the revenue total on the end of 1718, you project being at $278,000 versus $436 the previous year? What is, why is there less revenue?
So this is our revenue, and the difference, as you can see, 100,000 of it is the community development block grant money. We only got that one year, so we don't get it into 1718.
It's for the project.
It's for the project, right.
It's just the one time.
It's one time.
Very specific, and that's why.
It's very specific to that. And then the other differences are, so in fiscal year 1617, we went after a number of grants. This year, we devoted our time and effort to the Category 2 E-Rate, so we got the $220,000 of equipment rather than going after other grants. So that money isn't reflected, but that's where we spent our time and energy than going after some of the other grants that we've gone after in the past. Plus, you may or may not be aware, but IMLS, which is the Institute of Museum and Library Services, is on the, proposed to be eliminated completely. That is all of our Library Services and Technology Act grants, and that's, gosh, $50,000 of grants that we got this last year. So we, we ended up, again, deciding not to spend time going after a grant that we're not sure the money is going to be there for.
Thank you. That's kind of, it's too bad. I've been over to, I've been to Dobson Ranch Library while they have the young kids doing things, and it's almost like Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, all morning, there's a bunch of kids there. It's early childhood learning at its best, so.
Yeah, and that was an LSTA grant that bought us the Hatch screen.
I hope we can continue that somehow. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
Heather, thank you for your presentation. We had talked a little bit at the volunteer dinner about southeast Mesa and trying to get an express library or something out there. Chris, do you think there's an opportunity for us to partner with the county perhaps, since we have nothing down in southeast part of the, part of the district? The Belavia, the Eastmark, Highland Ridge, Santa Rita Ranch, I mean, I could name pretty much every subdivision down there that would, that's dying for, you know, that has kids dying for knowledge for libraries. And the express library's worked very well there at the Power Road Center. Is there a way that we can start working with the county or with developers or something to get some storefront, somewhere to put an express-type library in for the kids and citizens down in the southeast, southeast part of the district?
So Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, I think that's, there's really kind of two questions in there. One, we'd love to get more money from the county. As much as Heather was being very generous to the county for the dollars that we anticipate coming, the dollars that are actually paid by Mesa residents into the library district are much greater than the $300,000 or whatever that we might get back. I think it's over a million.
Over a million, yes.
Million dollars. So yes, I think we should try. I think we should suggest to the county that that would be a good partnership. I don't know, Heather, do you want to talk a little bit about maybe our perspective where we are with, I know the Power Road location is expiring, coming up, and so we, maybe talk about your perspective of the southeast Mesa, because we do recognize it's a fast-growing area with a huge demand, and what are some of your thoughts you have? Because yeah, we are looking at that, Heather and I talked a little bit about that.
So Councilmember Thompson, the, as we talked at the volunteer appreciation luncheon, but the rest of council doesn't know, we have a year lease at the Power Square Mall where we currently have the express library. It will be up next February. However, the mall is looking at changing its leasing, I don't know, inventory? They're looking at changing the types of organizations they lease to, and they want to reduce the retail component of their leasing makeup. We're considered part of that. So while we do have a year lease, it's a, they have a 30-day notice option, just as we do. So in 30 days, they could ask us to leave, or we can say in 30 days, we want to be gone. That is, it creates a question for us about the longevity of that location. It's been a great location, as you can see from the numbers, it continues to be used. But as it continues to be used, it's bumping up against the fact that it is an express library, and it is a very small square footage. So it's doing its job really well, but just as any new community really likes that gas station and that convenience store, so if they can run out and buy that gallon of milk, as the community grows, they want the grocery store. And that's really what we're hearing. And that's really what we're hearing, and I'm sure Councilmember Thompson is hearing from the residents that use the express library, is they want a full-service library. So, I think that we could go further east. Elliott Nelsworth was always the ideal place for planting a bricks-and-mortar, approximately 35,000-square-foot, library. But we could also, you know, I, when the economy went south and a lot of the pharmacies left, I kept eyeing those. They have great locations on corners, and it would be wonderful to put a little library in there and do an express library that maybe at least had room for storytimes and programming, because that's one of the areas that we're really bumping up against the limits of an express library. We don't want to violate the FIRE code and summer reading, our programming can do that. We used to go down to empty spaces within the mall, but as they're changing their leasing, we don't have that option for this summer. So, we will be reducing the amount of summer programming we'll be doing at that location.
Heather, you think with the lease expiring, because I'm meeting with Mesa Ridge in a few weeks to talk about Superstition Springs Mall, would you want me to ask them about potential space within the mall itself as an express library?
The concern I have for Superstition Springs is it's on the other side of 60.
Yeah.
And it puts it very close to the Red Mountain Library, which is at Power and University. What we found in talking with people is the 60 really was a mental barrier, and if you drive Power and 60, you, there's a lot of traffic with the mall, and so people just avoided that area. So, they were going to Southeast Regional at Greenfield and Guadalupe, and as Maricopa County residents, and as Chris pointed out, we're paying a lot of money, so they're very entitled to use that library. But I think we all want Mesa residents to be able to go to a Mesa library. It's a shame when a county library is the closest one for them. So, again, definitely, we need to go further south, we need to go further east. That is where the growth is. That is where all of our new traffic coming into the express library is coming from. And finding a way to make that happen, we used used book sale to pay the rent for the express library, and we reallocated staff and materials. Stretching what we have now to still more locations is going to be hard.
Councilwoman, why don't we, you know, give us a couple of months, why don't we come back in about three or four months and come up with some, because then by then, we'll be knowing we're really close to the term, you know, end of the
Yes, that's true.
...lease and come up with, we need to put a presence in southeast Mesa. So, maybe we could come back with a few ideas about what, where we could reestablish that decision.
Mr. Luna.
Just real quick, have you thought of maybe partnering with a school, one of the schools that's in District Six? There's Gilbert School District, there's also Charter Schools. They may have some space that they would be able to allocate. Certainly, they have the parking areas and they may have a portable building that they're not using.
Yeah, we did talk to them probably about a year ago, and it just kind of fizzled.
And shared-use libraries are a little tricky. Both Chandler and Scottsdale have them. Scottsdale found that they work best at the high school, and Chandler's are only at the high school. With current safety concerns, having the public on an elementary school campus can be difficult to make that all work, so.
Mr. Winkle. Whitaker.
Just to average things out, because I did it to...
Mr. Whitaker, excuse me.
My question's on that heat map. Is that actually designed based on the addresses that are pulled from library cardholders? Or is that just the population density heat map?
No, it's based on the addresses of library cardholders. So, it's pretty easy to see that the density is greatest around where there are libraries located.
Okay. So, you believe that the correlation is proximity to the library, not necessarily people in District Six? No offense, Kevin, don't read.
They can read, they just...
I forget your city manager.
There's sort of a rule of thumb that libraries should be located about three, there should be about a three-mile radius, so it is definitely a convenience factor.
Okay.
Yes.
And the last question that I had, actually not really a question, but a comment. I personally love the library, and I think what you guys are doing is great. There's some things that you've mentioned today, like 3D printers, the Raspberry Pi and the Code Club, that I wasn't even aware of. I know that the city has recently started doing a huge social media push. We have a team now going around and kind of doing a blog and interview a different department, so I would love to see more of that if they could reach out to some of your programs and if we start seeing some of that stuff pop up on social media. I think then members of the community will actually realize that that's available to them and engage more, so I would love to see where we can go with that stuff in the future.
Thank you for the suggestion.
Mr. Winkle, right?
Yes. Do you partner with Arizona Humanities at all?
We have in the past for some of our book discussion groups and other programs that we do. Sometimes, there's a cost with those presenters.
I'm just thinking, because I know that they've done a lot of stuff regarding libraries lately and how to get people back in libraries, I don't know if they maybe could dedicate staff or volunteers to help you if you have to reallocate staff, you know, that might be help.
Thank you.
Mr. Freeman.
Thanks, Heather, for the presentation. I know my grandchildren love the Code Club. They come and participate that here at the main library. I was just thinking, are there any problems in the libraries, security-wise, patron-wise, any things that you experience and perhaps have an action plan for? If, you know, things in general, I mean, you have a great presentation, but are there problems that the libraries are experiencing?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, security problems, the, we are a public facility, and the public in all its many shapes and forms comes into the library. So, at the library, everyone is welcome as long as they follow our code of conduct. So, we do kind of base things on behavior. So, that's where our security guards, we do have security at the main library, and they do help us, we try to be warm and welcoming, but we also want to make sure that everyone can enjoy the space. So, that's sort of how we talk to people, is if you're doing something that disrupts others' people's ability to enjoy the library, then we're going to come talk to you and ask you to change that behavior. So, we do, staff and our security guard do, security guards do enforce the code of conduct. We do have, as, again, as a public facility, we have a public forum. We have a free speech zone out front, and that creates some interesting situations, too, as people of the community come into contact with people who have differing beliefs and values. So, but most people, when we explain to them, you know, why people are allowed to exercise their free speech in front of the library, most of them are, they just, as long as the person isn't too aggressive and allows them to get in and out of the library, that's really what we ask. So, then, most people are like, oh, okay, you know, this is part of an American democracy, and that's pretty cool that that can happen. But like I said, sometimes I get phone calls about, does the library really, you know, believe that such-and-such should appear on a ballot or whatever? And it's like, well, no, we're neutral. That person is just exercising their ability to speak about things that matter to them.
Thank you. Heather, we're proud of the library. You guys do a great job. Sometimes, I do ponder, you know, is a library a 20th-century paradigm in a 21st-century world? You know, how do we, and you addressed that question today, that the fact that the hard copy checking out is actually growing?
Yes.
I mean, that's something I didn't know, and I appreciate knowing that. So, we need to support that. And, but I, and I do sometimes, maybe like others, hear complaints from parents who are anxious to take care or take advantage of the early literacy opportunities of the library and the interaction with the public internet access that is also an important part of the library. So, I have, and both of those, as you pointed out earlier, are important. I think those of us that have run for office may have spent some time standing in front of the library, getting signature petitions, petition signatures, and realized how critical it is to the public to have access to the internet. It's a, it's an important utility. But it has, as we talk about future needs for the library, and absolutely, we need to address something in southeast Mesa or some things, but it, I wonder if the public internet function and the early literacy function are not somewhat mutually exclusive. I have had parents of young children express concern over some, the atmosphere that sometimes they experience in the library. So, I think it might be a great idea to explore maybe a standalone, early literacy-focused library, maybe in a Walgreens on a corner somewhere, where it's nothing but, you know, bring your children here. It's very child-oriented, but it's nothing but bring your children to this, to this experience and let's work on early literacy. As you know, that's been identified as a need in our community, having greater access to early childhood education, pre-K programs. And I wonder if maybe, this is really food for thought for a year or so from now, and we might be toying with putting something on, maybe up for a library bond, but certainly facilities out in southeast Mesa, but also maybe a facility that is exclusively for early childhood and a children's library. I know we have a children's library within our main library, but I wonder if it, I wonder about the idea of maybe segregating those a little bit. But I'm curious to get your reaction to that, and then, Mr. Winkle.
So, Mayor, and I'm sorry, I must, I think I kind of missed Councilmember Freeman's point. So, the downtown library does have a population of people who are experiencing homelessness, who do use the library very regularly. The good news is the city downtown area now has a Navigator, and we see them at the library very frequently. Libraries have been dealing with this issue for my career in libraries, and I'm sure well before I got here. And a lot of it is, you know, we're not equipped to handle the social needs of the people who are either experiencing mental health issues, they've recently, they have addiction issues, or, you know, maybe they've recently been released from some sort of incarceration and are looking for a safe place to be while they get their feet under them. So, the Navigator has been a wonderful addition. It's helping us help them in ways that they can, they need to be helped. We did do some recent research on what other libraries are doing. There's about 20 libraries who actually, either through grants or partnerships, have been able to find ways to hire social workers and/or medical staff to work in their libraries specifically to address the needs of this particular population. So, that's, yeah, you know, the demands on the library are whatever the community's needs are. So, if we want to pursue those avenues, we certainly can, and we would be glad to share the research we've done so far and continue to do more research on what some possible options might be towards addressing the needs of that population. When I, right now, when you go to, say, the main library or the Dobson Library, and Red Mountain, too, they all see folks who are experiencing homelessness. The children's area, we try to put towards the front and, you know, so that it's easy for parents to get in and out of there with strollers and kids who are easily distracted. And, you know, we want to make it very easy for that population to get to the resources that they are interested in. So, the adult areas are already separated, and the computers are somewhat separated from the children's area. You know, I suppose we could do something like move things to the second floor or something like that at the main library. I don't know. We can think about that. We, we used to have the public computers on the second floor when I started in 98. You know, so there's some, there's some possibilities there, but children are welcome in all parts of the library, too, and we want them to be comfortable in all parts of the library. And so, just having the children's area separate doesn't mean that they're not going to go into the other parts of the library. I'm sorry, that was sort of a...
No, this is, I'm sorry, I come out of left field with this idea, but it literally just, the idea of a children's library that is kind of compelling, just a children, early childhood education facility is something we might want to talk about going forward. Mr. Winkle.
To the mayor's point, at Dobson, they have a separate room that's just right across the way at the same library that's kind of keeps it separate space, I guess, safety-wise, and then they use the park right behind it. But on the other hand, we do live in an urbanized society, and people need to understand that there's different people in the world. So, you know, when you go somewhere, you can't always be afraid of somebody. I'd be interested in finding out how, what the incident rate at a library is, you know what I mean, of
Yeah.
...something happening, you know?
Well, in our studies, we did find ours is pretty low compared to what some other libraries. And some libraries had less inclusive policies, let me just say, and there was a lot of public backlash for those policies. So, you do have to, plus, there's legal ramifications, too. I mean, we are a public facility, and we don't want to look like we're denying people the right and the ability to use the facility. So, we would have to be careful. The other thing about a children's library, again, back to Councilmember Whitaker's point, it is convenience. So, finding a location that would work for a lot of families, because then you're having one library that, you know, Mesa's such a huge geographic area, if not all families could easily get to it.
Yeah, good point. Thank you. Additional questions? Thank you very much, Heather.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much, Heather.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Arts and Culture, Cindy Ornstein, nice to have you with us.
So, you're all set to go, Cindy? Thank you very much. You're welcome, enjoy. Thanks.
Separation.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Happy to be with you this morning. I couldn't help reflecting on Heather's story about, well, first of all, I'm Cindy Ornstein. As you said, I am Director of Arts and Culture and Executive Director of Mesa Arts Center, and want to acknowledge that I have staff in the room to support me with answers to any questions that I cannot answer. I couldn't help reflecting on Heather's quote, "To support the common good is divine," and to note that Franklin's First Library had specimens and artifacts, which, within that same century, the First Museum was founded, and people started to realize that that was a need and an extension of that learning opportunity that libraries presented. And so, we're happy to talk about the, what we try to do to further the common good. The first slide is really about the case statement for the value of arts and culture to a society and a, and a community. We believe strongly, and studies really support, that the arts and culture play an incredible role in building healthy communities, both individuals and communities as a whole. They're an investment in both personal well-being, the sense of being part of a larger community, a social fabric, and they're really an investment in a creative economy. And the creative economy as a whole, both for-profit, nonprofit, the full range, is one of the fastest segments of the global economy when you take it in all its facets. Our mission as a department, I won't read it, but you can see at heart, it's about strengthening that social, creative, economic fabric, and it's really to be inspirational and transformational. And we look to partner and encourage cross-sector collaborations because we believe that the arts are an incredible tool to service other needs beyond just the arts and culture programming itself. Our desired outcomes are all around... Our desired outcomes are all around how we can provide those extraordinary experiences that help with learning, but also build creativity and support innovation in our community. We really look to increase our public's participation, not only in terms of numbers, but the depth and engagement that we provide, so that real learning and real conversation across differences happens. We encourage diversity in who we reach and the kind of programming we provide. We do think it's very important that we create community gathering spaces in a world where there often isn't that connectivity between people. Arts and culture venues and programs give people a chance to come together, and we use strong partnerships throughout the community to expand our reach and our access to new audiences, and also to provide extra quality. This is a small list of many recent accomplishments. I will just touch, since you have them in front of you and they're on the screen for the public, I'm just going to touch on a, a couple of examples to illuminate some of the work that's being done. MAC, Mesa Art Center, has a creative aging program that has been in existence for about five years, and is actually considered a national model in how we use creative practice to engage older adults and, and improve their quality of life. We have services to able-bodied, healthy older adults, to older adults experiencing low to moderate dementia, and also through our partnership with Oakwood Creative Care, we service those with severe dementia as well with these programs. The Arts in Mind program this year, which is a pilot, was funded by a major national grant, one of six given nationally, and has allowed us to explore how programs can, hands-on participatory programs can be used to support not only those older adults with low to moderate dementia, but in concert with their caregivers. The, the research shows that the caregivers of those who have loved ones with dementia, the stresses on them are tremendous, and the arts are a great tool to bring them together in really moments of joy and learning and sharing that are very beneficial to both parties. The, the IDEA Museum is going through just an amazing renaissance since it transformed from Arizona Museum for Youth, and they have had wonderful support from the Piper Trust. They are at the end of a project called Securing Our Destiny, Bolstering Our Development, to build their capacity to build contributed income and community support for the museum and its programs. And they also just were accepted into the Agile program this year, and this is the first year of a new program by Piper Trust where you had to be invited to apply, and then you had to gain your participation. And the program is providing a consultant for a full year to look at the whole museum with stakeholders, with donors, with staff, to explore what the challenges and opportunities are that will really move the museum to the most resilient place it can be, where it can tackle opportunities that present themselves and deal with future challenges. The beautiful thing about this program, in addition to the learning, is that at the end of the day, based on the consultant's recommendations, there will be up to $250,000 in funding to achieve the goals that are identified. And just to mention, one of many accomplishments for the Museum of Natural History, they have been getting, because of their reputation, and they are the premier natural history museum in our state, they have been receiving incredible donations over the last few years worth large sums of money, but also really preserving, providing arti- artifacts to help us tell the story of early America and Native American communities through artifacts. One of those collections was a recent donation from the Grubb family of over 500 Native American objects, textiles and baskets, really a very, very fine collection, and that will allow us to tell stories that people need to understand about our history and, and the Native American history in our area. This chart is about measuring success. We have a number of different things we look at, participation, corresponding revenues, how our volunteers and memberships are growing. We chose to focus here on participation because it correlates to so many of our other measures. What you're seeing is a long-term chart starting in the 2009, 2010 fiscal year. You can see the big impact of the branding change for IDEA Museum from Arizona Museum for Youth. They've had a significant increase in participation from that. Mesa Art Center has been investing in free community events. Engagement programs have grown significantly since the 2009, 10 year, so you can see we've, we're hovering back and forth now up in that 400 to 450 range. And Natural History was already extremely strong in its participation, and, and they continue to be in the 120 to 150,000 a year range. What is important to point out is that all of our institutions have tremendous numbers of variables in programming, so depending on the exhibitions, depending on the shows at MAC, depending on special grants we have for special projects in a given year that may augment a program for one year that is not an ongoing, it may be a special project or a special event, there are anomalies that occur up and down in that attendance. But overall, you can see we have a generally very positive trend line in attendance. And of course, I, yes?
Mr. Thompson.
Cindy, are we, when we, when we look at the graphs, are we tracking where visitors are coming from?
So we do track for the people who pay an admission at, to, like, if someone orders their ticket online or has an account for ticket purchasing at MAC, or if they are taking a class. But at the time of admission at a museum, for example, where people are moving quickly, sometimes you're able to get zip codes, sometimes there's just too much of a line. But we, we are able to track our volunteers, our members, and our, and the people who buy a ticket. So we have a pretty good idea of distribution, but we don't, aren't able to track everyone, like, at free events, things like that.
Is, are we saying that it's mostly Mesa residents? Are we pulling, and the reason I'm asking is because I think it would help, you know, not only DMA, but I think it would help Visit Mesa as well target market certain areas of, of the Phoenix metro to pull people into Mesa, into our museums, and into our, our arts community.
Absolutely. No, the last, it's been a few years, and I, it is time to do a GIS mapping again, using the data we do have. The last time we did it, certainly the red dots were thickest around Mesa. We consider our primary service area to be within an hour simply because people do like convenience. But the rap maps were across, the, the red dots were across the valley. We actually have a pretty high concentration of users, users all the way out to the middle of Phoenix, so eastern side of Phoenix, down into Awatuki, Tempe, Chandler, Gilbert, up into Scottsdale, Paradise Valley. We have a lot of attendees coming from, throughout that area, and we will update that map, can, happy to share it with all of you, and also with Visit Mesa and DMA.
Mr. Luna.
I'm wondering if the light rail has made an impact of attendance. You say you're citing Phoenix and Tempe, are, do we know if we're getting people coming in via the light rail?
Are, the perception is purely anecdotal. We perceive that there are some more people attending from the light rail. We see it most especially for events, like, we'll notice at festivals that the light rail arrives, and then we see a new influx of people coming, you know, into the area of the festival. So we know we do have some, we think it's incremental and gradual as people start exploring and experimenting with the places the light rail will take them. I wouldn't say it's been some huge dramatic thing, I'd say it's more evolutionary.
Excuse me, Cindy, Mr. Whitaker.
My question, since 2009, it looks like MAC and IDEA have increased by about 50%, but the Museum of Natural History is maybe around 1%. Can you comment on what's going on at Museum of Natural History, or what you need, or is it just a loss of interest? Like, what's, what's going on with that?
Well, they already, I will say, had statistically, as, as museums of their size go, compared to our two organizations, they were ahead of us in terms of being at a very robust place already in 2009, 2010 with their attendance. So they, they didn't have as much upside potential, if you will. They have a very, very strong attendance. But I think we should note that there were some significant cuts in the recession for our museums, and the two, for the Arts and Culture Department as a whole, but the museums got most heavily hit. And one of the things that happened at Natural History is they did have to cut down on the number of temporary exhibitions, the number of changes of exhibitions, and they do see a correlation when there is, when there's a new exhibition, there's a bump in their attendance, but they do not have the staffing and budget to do as many new exhibitions as they used to be able to do. So it's been hard for them to, to achieve that big bump. Like, you, you can even see, there was an uptick in the last couple of years from the years prior, and that was when they, they installed their new robotic dinosaurs and refurbished Dinosaur Mountain, and put in a new dinosaur exhibit, and that caused a little uptick from 1314. There's a, a trend line up. But that is an impact, the amount of new exhibitions that they can mount.
All right, I just want to make one last comment, and it, it goes to the same thing that I made during the last presentation, so I know the city now has a social media team that's going around and doing, you know, presentations and kind of showing that stuff on social media, and I think that the Arizona Museum of Natural History could benefit greatly from that, because I feel like there's a detachment from parts of the city away from the museum, where they, people may not even know what's going on over there. So it would be nice if we, if we bridge that gap between the social media team, and I think that would truly help the museum as well.
Thank you. I will speak actually to all of our marketing people about making sure that we're getting with them and exploring what the additional opportunities might be. Thank you for that. I do also want to mention that the 2016, 17 numbers obviously are estimates. They do not represent actual year-end, and we did try to be a little conservative on our guesstimate there. In terms of measuring success, we also do surveys of our patrons about their satisfaction, and we have, as a department, really excellent ratings. For our top two ratings, a very good and excellent, you can see that in customer service, we received 87% saying that our customer service was excellent or very good, and 91% saying our programming was excellent or very good. In addition, there's a statistic here about Mesa Art Center and our use days. And I will tell you that something that's really interesting about that is, we just got our newest numbers, and those have skyrocketed. The number of use days per venue as an average is now 227, and the like groups of performing art centers are actually at 177. So we are doing really, really well at using our facility aggressively, and I, I was just at a meeting where even across all the different size performing art centers, including ones that are three and four times our size, the average use days were only at 199. So we're exceeding that across all sizes of art centers. The staff is extremely busy with both our own shows and rentals and community events. Yes, Mayor?
Cindy, I've heard a, a statistic in the past about the number of events per year at the MAC, and it's higher than 227. I mean, it's, it's more events than there are days in the year, so...
Sorry, that's per theater venue. So this is not counting any of our free events out in any of the other portions of the campus, and it is per theater. So you multiply that by four to get the total events. So I think the average events for the theaters was talked about it being around 7, 800, which is for all four theaters, and we're up, will be up over 800 this year with that average use. So that's just per theater, because that's what the statistic was nationally that I was comparing it to.
Okay, can you say that one more time? Because I didn't understand.
Sure. So the 227 is for each theater, that's the use, the average usage day, and, and it's actually less for some, more for others. But we, we have four theaters, so you have to multiply that times four to get your total theater events.
Okay.
And use days, because it includes rehearsal days, load-in, load-in-out, all of that.
Okay, thank, yeah, I, I'm under the impression you're, you're very, very busy, and saying 227 events, I think, kind of understates that.
Exactly. So that is, to reiterate, per theater, with four theaters, and that, as I said, does not count festivals, community concerts, things happening in the museum. This is only a statistic for the theaters.
Thank you.
To just briefly remind that we have an Arts and Culture Fund, which started three years ago as a means for giving the department an opportunity to have a place to, to create a reserve fund as we, if, when we exceed on our income goals, so that we can reinvest or deal with emergencies that come up. So the general fund is budgeted now with a set amount, it's roughly around $7 million, that flows through each year to the Arts and Culture Fund with the, with the understanding that we will raise, and that is the city's investment in the, in the Arts and Culture Fund in the, in the department, and then with the understanding that we will use earned and contributed revenues to make up the difference, and that if we exceed our goals, we will be able to then have that money to use for opportunities for the public that, that arise. We do have many other funding sources, you can see they're listed here, but they range from the support of our volunteer boards in fundraising to many grants, which we aggressively pursue, special events and capital gifts, et cetera. There is a chart for each institution that shows the breakout of the expense categories and the revenue categories, including the city investment. I will point out, this is the adopted budget, not the final budget, and we actually expect that we will actually do better than what's shown in the adopted budget on the city investment. We will, we will exceed our original revenue goals. But you can see the detail of the breakout, and if you combine the programs and the support, the parts of the operation that support programming, it accounts for roughly three-quarters of our activity, at least half of it, and then building and grounds and operations are really supportive to that. And the much simpler chart, broken down for IDEA Museum and Natural History, look at exhibitions, education, and then operations, which holds everything else, administration, marketing, et cetera. And their strong, IDEA Museum has, had very strong growth in contribution and aid. And Natural History's chart, where you see the significant amount that's going into their cultural programming as a portion of their budget. I do want to point out that you see a smaller wedge for contributions and aid here. This is the, only made up of grants for the Natural History Museum in particular, rather than some of the membership and, and individual donations flowing back into operations. Their board has chosen to save it to try to create investment revenue. They are hoping to get it to a point where it produces investment income to go into the operations of the museum on an annual basis. So they have a goal of having some regular income from investments once they build that pot of money to a sufficient point. This slide is about how we are addressing the, our, our contribution to closing the gap on the city's budget with the requested cuts for this year. We actually have achieved most of what we were asked to do through revenue enhancements. You will see that we have a small increase in our fees within the range approved by council previously for the service fees on tickets at Mesa Art Center, still well within a com- the service fees on tickets at Mesa Art Center, still well within a competitive range in the marketplace, probably even a little low, lower than median. Our rentals have been doing gangbusters the last few years. So, we are with confidence able to increase the amount for the rental increases over the amount that was budgeted previously to help close the gap. And that's a commitment we've made in the next year's budget. We also have, I'll jump, because I'll go to savings in a moment, down to IDEA and Natural History, where we have both expanded revenue due to expanded programming and hours at IDEA Museum. And because Natural History has exceeded their revenue goals for the last two years, we were able to commit $38,000 more to that goal. Up above, you see there are two areas of savings. One is, we were able to get a new contract for campus radios that have a lower service fee. That's saving a considerable amount, about $34,000, $35,000 a year. And we did some cutting here and there on materials and supplies to achieve some savings. We have done some reductions in admin and festivals, and also have salary savings from a, from a position that will be eliminated next year, at the, within the coming year, when the employee retires. There's an employee in our operations staff planning to retire when he chooses to retire. We will repurpose some other staff hours to cover those duties. And get, and that will contribute to the city's savings. There are three charts that show financials. The first one is budget summary by fund. We are a little more complicated than most. We have a restoration fund that is shown here that has since been appropriately moved to CIP where it really belongs. So, that's why you see that disappear next year. We also have grants and special program funds. Those are all the contributed dollars. And they are shown both as revenue and expense, because when they hit the budget for the areas that they fund, they come in as an expense. I will share that one thing that you notice when you start comparing year to year is you start seeing fluctuations that may seem like they don't make sense. In large measure, what that is caused by is that our contributions are counted in the year they come in. So, they're recognized as income the year they come in, even if they won't all be spent in that year and their carryovers, or if it's a multi-year grant where they're going to be spent over a couple of years. So, you have fluctuations primarily having to do with grant funding and carryovers from those grants or contributions into future years. So, you'll see a, an amount where the, the revenue and expense doesn't match in one direction, and then the next year it doesn't match in the other. So, that's the main cause for those variables. And then there are a few, a few anomalies that have to do with things that, for instance, I'll just point out, you'll see a general fund number under revenue of 264. That's because the regular amount that flows into us from general fund goes straight to the Arts and Culture Fund line lower in that chart. But in fact, that year in 1516, there was an amount that was a contribution that arrived late after the expenditure had occurred for the Alliance Pavilion being built from the Alliance Entertainment, Arts and Entertainment Alliance Fund. And they gave us the money. And so, we repaid the general fund for the money that had been expended that we knew was promised and had been used for the project. So, there are a few of those kinds of anomalies. But the overall on our budgets, the variances mostly have to do with the earlier mentioned changes in contributions and grants and when they arrive. And the second thing is variability in programs. You will see some years where there's a big difference in funds. And it has to do frequently with a special project, or a major event, or activity that had an unusual amount of expense and revenue attached to it. An example I've used that I'll, I'll point to because it's a good one is, you know, in a year when you have a Riverdance with eight sold-out shows, that's a big amount of money, both in expense and revenue. It jumps up the numbers, but it's not something you're going to have every year in your budget. So, I think we'll go to the expense and revenue charts to get a little bit more clarity and to point out a couple of, of things. One of the, one of the things that we are, in terms of seeing the variability on the grants, for example, well, actually, it's hard because you have to...
Mayor, I was just gonna say, if council has any questions on, are there any questions on these charts? I know we just have a lot of other things to do.
Yeah. So, we'll just say, if you have any questions, and give the overall, maybe the overall statement. Because here is expense, and you can see it, the bottom line. And here's revenue. And just to say that the bottom line on this year, year-end estimate, is that we anticipate ending the year better on expenses and better on revenue. So, we'll be a little bit under on expenses. And we're anticipating being over on revenue against our adopted budget. And that's sort of the bottom line story there. So, yes, we will go to any questions you have on that or anything else.
Thank you, Cindy. Mr. Thompson.
Cindy, I noticed one of your slides, you talked a little bit about some of the revenue you generate through your board members, through fundraising and through grants. How much do you take in, in fundraising and through your board members?
Okay. Well, it varies a lot each year. But for each institution, it's somewhat different. At Mesa Art Center, we average in the $500,000 to $800,000 range annually. And we are, we have been working very hard to grow our education and engagement programs and access programs that are the stories and the basis for achieving those contributed dollars. And we are, we are, we have a very aggressive development plan for the coming years to try to grow that number. And then at IDEA Museum, if I look at the, I would have to look at the fund to see that overall, the combined amount this year, if you look for grants and special programs funds for the whole department, it comes to just a little over a million. So, that's the total for the three of us.
So, the three, so the three of you combined, Art Center, IDEA Museum, and the History Museum, Natural History Museum, are raising $1 million a year in fundraising and through contributions?
Correct.
Amazing.
Mr. Lona.
I would, I would be remiss if I didn't do a shout out to Sonny O'Rourke, who does an amazing job at the IDEA Museum. And Brandi Vogel. And Tom, where's Tom?
I'm sorry.
Tom's here, too.
Yeah. Thank you for your fundraising efforts. It's essentially, you do a wonderful job. I know the IDEA Museum, they have a board. And the requirement is that 100% board participation, as well as 40% of the budget is fundraising. And they've done an outstanding job. And they continue to exceed that. So, I wanted to congratulate them for those efforts as well.
Thank you. Yes, I really appreciate the efforts of all the, all the managers and all the staff and the good work they do.
Thank you. Mr. Whitaker.
I got it.
I just want to point out, we, to Chris's point, we skipped three charts that are after the question slide. So, I was hoping we could review. I'm just kidding. I don't want to...
I'm here all day. I'm here all day. Some of these folks, I'm here all day.
I just want to point out, I didn't, I didn't go to those charts. I was good.
But your breakdown with the pie graphs and the charts and everything, I really appreciate the time that you guys put into that. I think it's really in-depth, and it helps us paint a picture of what's going on. So, an extended thank you for actually putting that data together.
Thank you very much. If there are no other questions, thank you very much. And I appreciate your time.
Cindy, let me just echo the compliments that have been paid. We're very, very proud of the MAC and of our museums. I brag about you constantly. I'm excited for the dinosaur that's gonna be busting out of the wall of the Natural History Museum here in the near future. That, I think, is gonna be a great addition to our downtown. And very proud of the fundraising that all of you do. Had an amazing fundraiser lunch for the, for the IDEA Museum just a couple of weeks ago. So, you're successful because of the hard work that you put in. And I appreciate the great job you do.
Thank you so much to all of you for your support. We very much appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is Agenda Item 1B. Here, presentation, discuss, and provide direction on the development of a conceptual master plan and process for the future development of the approximately 25 acres of city-owned land located at the southwest corner of University and Mesa Drive. Mr. McVeigh, good to have you with us.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Do I get the award for the longest Agenda Item language for the day?
Yes, you do.
As long as you have the shortest presentation.
That was my, you stole my next line. Mayor, Council, I am gonna try and get through this really quickly. Back in February of last year, we started this discussion about what happens with Mason University Drive. 25 acres of city-owned land that represents an amazing opportunity to have a new development that reflects its proximity to light rail, the scale of the development opportunity, and just the impact that can have in downtown as a whole. When we started that discussion, we came up with a few guiding principles. They're listed here on the page. I won't read them to you. But we did some community outreach over the summer and fall of last year, in the community as well as in the development community. And what we found is that these guiding principles hold true through, held through, true throughout. There are some details in there of whether it's owner-occupied, renter-occupied housing, whether it's more commercial, less commercial. But overall, these are really solid guiding principles. So, having said that, and having that as our, kind of our framework that we're working with, council asked us to come back and present an option for how we might actually go out into the development community and get things started at Mason University Drive. Our proposal is to actually go out and solicit for a consulting services to provide master, conceptual master planning, as well as the public process that would be involved with that. We've had a huge amount of community involvement as we were engaging and looking at what could happen and envisioning what could happen at this property. So, we'd like to continue that. And given that the, the real opportunity that this presents for downtown, we think that the best process is to go through with a design consultant that's hired by the city, represents the city, but also has a nice understanding of what it means to work within the private development community and what the market realities are that are associated with that. So, any of this master plan or conceptual master plans that came out of this would have a market feasibility component involved. So, that they'd have to be tested and proven that they, they are viable in the community. The other side of this that's very important is that it's a conceptual master plan. It's just something that we would use as the framework for going out to developers and soliciting developers to propose on the property. The conceptual master plan provides a framework. Essentially, it tells the developers what the, the city's vision is there. But it still provides that flexibility to allow a developer to come in and provide a final plan that is consistent with that vision, but, but in line more with what they would like to do as a development. So, it really provides a broad framework. Once we have a master plan in place, a conceptual master plan in place, we would go out RFP to the development community. We can do this as either a single master developer that would be taking the development of the entire 25 acres. Or it could be parceled out over time, and you could go with smaller infill developers that would take a single parcel at a time. We'd negotiate our development agreements and purchase and sale agreements. And in the end, we would select a final developer and move forward with development plans. I was faster than I expected to be, so.
That was, that was very fast. So, Jeff, there's two options there. We either do an RFP for a master developer, or we go piecemeal, one at a time. So, how are we gonna make that decision? Is the first step to hire this consultant that's gonna give us a master plan? And is that person gonna make recommendations as to whether or not we ought to do, you know, the whole enchilada, or a bite at a time? Or how are we gonna reach that decision?
Mayor, Council, thank you for that question. It's actually a really good one. Through the, the development of a conceptual master plan, one of the things that we would include in that scope of work is the development of a parceling plan and a phasing plan, so that we could see how the lots and blocks would break up. And then, once we have that in place, then, once we are going out for soliciting actual developers, we could make the determination at that time whether we wanted to go out for a master developer, or whether we wanted to actually essentially function as the master developer ourselves and parcel it out piecemeal. And it's a policy decision that the council would be able to make at the time that we went out to the community.
There's, we're the landowners here. So, looking at it from, and we've got a couple of different goals here. One is to develop this property in a way that is in the best interests of the city. But the other might be to make some money in the process. Which one of those alternative, do you have an idea which one of those is a more lucrative for the taxpayers approach to this?
Mayor, Council, I will, I will be completely guessing at this. But I would, I would assume with a master developer, you would be, they would still be wanting to take down parcels at a time. They, there would be, I don't think that we'd have a master developer that say, here's, here's a check. I take ownership of all 25 acres, and now I'm gonna build it. They'll probably say, we want to move forward with this property first, and we'll pay whatever the market price is at that time. I would imagine that they would also want us to lock in what the price for each of those parcels are, no matter how long their development took. Now, if we went piecemeal with infill developers over time, we could potentially see increased land values as the development before increased the value for the next development and increased the value for the next development. It's pure speculation, Mayor. I couldn't...
Yeah. Mayor, I think it really depends on whether the city wants cash upfront, which then the cost per square foot is, or the price per square foot is gonna be much less. Or do you wait as development takes place and the value of land goes up? But then you may be waiting a decade or so before you get the last straw down. So, I think it's, we just kinda have to see. And right now, what we would have struggle with is if we're gonna parcel it out, we don't know what part, you know, we don't know how much is it, we don't know what it looks like in order to kind of break it up into pieces. And that's why we want to do the first step. Then we could come back and say, okay, does this fit best with a master developer? Or is it something that we could parcel out and do a, I don't know, whatever, three or four different, a couple of different sections at a time?
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, I like the idea of having the conceptual master plan. I see this a lot like what, what DMB did with Eastmark, where, you know, they have this raw piece of land, excuse me, and they were able to, you know, develop a vision of where they wanted to go along with the city's input, of where they, where they wanted to go and including the parks and the, in the, the community aspects, and then the housing along with it, as well as, you know, their future entertainment and, and retail corridor. So, I like the, the concept of doing a conceptual master plan, having a consultant that can, that can follow along with, ensuring the form-based code is followed, and that, you know, that the city's best interest and the citizens' best interest are kept in check. And so, I would support having a, having that conceptual, having a consultant that would carry that conceptual forward.
Thank you. Mr. Lona.
I also agree. I think that having a master plan to develop the site would be very, is critical. And I think that having community input in terms of what that's gonna look like is going to be part of that process. So, I would support the whole idea of having a development of a master plan.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman.
So, Jeff, are you saying that we are going to be the master planner? Are we going to go out and get a master planner to plant, help us plan it as a partnership? Is that what you're indicating?
Mayor, Councilman Freeman, yes. We would, we would hire a professional design consultant that, that has good experience in doing projects like this to, to represent us through the master planning process.
Yeah. Cause I'm not in favor of us being the master planner. I mean, we don't have the experience nor the time.
Yeah, I think we just heard our planners were busy.
Unless we're gonna hire several more.
How long would we have to wait for a permit?
Well, if this is successful, Christine can hand out a lot more peanuts.
We're gonna call, we're gonna call Councilman Thompson, see if he can get it too faster for us.
Yeah, maybe Thompson can make it.
Call Councilman Thompson.
All right.
The other part of it, I think we...
This is trending down, isn't it? I'm sorry about that.
We need to also listen to the input that we got on the survey and, and help that drive some of the conversation. You know, and in some of my prior conversations with Mr. Brady, and I'll put him on the spot, in some areas, he likes to build all of it at once. And especially over at Riverview, you talked about building everything at once. I think that provides a huge economic impact to that area. So, I'm kinda not in favor of parceling it out. I see the wisdom in that. But what if land values do drop a little bit? But then again, if you take and have a master planner plan the whole project with our involvement, and then let it go, sell it for whatever it is, and just... and then let it go, sell it for whatever it is, and just take the money, and we're done. So that's just one thought I have. So we can be involved in the process, we own the property, again, get the master planner, that's what I support.
Great. Why don't we focus on questions from Mr. McVeigh, because we do have a couple of speakers that are here, and so maybe we can, that might prompt some additional discussion after we hear from the speakers as well. Mr. Whitaker?
The question I have is, when we talk about community input, I was wondering if you can comment on the statistical accuracy, or if you believe that the data that you received from your previous, you know, input is good data? I know that I had sat in on some old council meetings, and, you know, individuals indicated, I've been to multiple events, and I voted on multiple times, and that's concerning to me that, you know, we're not actually reaching out to the entire community, or, you know, what can we put in place digitally, online, that we can actually reach a larger base to get more input from the citizens of the community?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, thank you for that. Yes, we did have almost 1,900 responses to our online survey in our, in our two community meetings, but, but the fact of the matter is that the data that came out of that is representative of those people that participated in the survey and participated in the meeting. There isn't, we can't make them statistically valid for the city, there is no sampling of the, of the city's population. We did do our best to, to make the meetings open and available to everybody in the city, but we didn't, we didn't target specific neighborhoods outside of those that are immediately adjacent to University Mesa Drive. So while, while we do have some good feedback from, from property or people that live in that vicinity, we do, we do want to engage more of the city. And one of the things I didn't touch on, trying to get through quickly, is that I would see any of the conceptual master planning process being a very public process. Design charrettes, things along that line, where the community is invited in to participate into the process. And we would have to work on strategies to help make sure that we are engaging the entire city and providing that opportunity to the entire city while we're going through it.
And just the one last thing that I hope I can recommend is that perhaps we could use utility bills or other, some other form of authenticating individuals who are providing feedback and making sure that people aren't voting one time, you know, so that those results aren't further skewed.
We'll look into that, Councilmember Whitaker.
Mr. Freeman?
Jeff, one other question. Has our Economic EDA Board been involved in this process, or Economic Director?
We have engaged with our economic development staff through the, through the process up to this point. I will actually be going to the EDA Board next week, I believe they meet, and I'm going to be presenting on an update of what's happening in downtown, and this will be one of the topics with your direction, and I'll actually be able to, to talk a little bit more detail with them about it.
Great, thank you. Mr. Winkle?
Just one point of direction that I think you probably already know, is that, is that everything we do here should complement everything that happens downtown, essentially. So if we're building some giant commercial complex over here that has restaurants and things, I think that draws away from the downtown restaurants, so I think we should stick to things that complement the downtown restaurant.
And Mayor, Councilmember Winkle, I wholeheartedly agree. One of our guiding principles that I flashed up there at the beginning was that it has to support downtown, not draw away from downtown. The nice thing about a conceptual master planning process is it gives the city the level of control it needs to ensure that the vision is being met. While through the development process, we have the flexibility to know that we can respond to what the market realities are at the time.
Great. We do have a couple of members of the public. Dee, would you like to defer to... Oh, okay. Tim Boyle?
If you ask him, he has the numbers on the number of planners for all the...
Okay, we'll see if somebody asks him then. Mr. Boyle, you have three minutes, good to have you here, and thank you for your service on our Planning and Zoning Board as well.
Thank you very much. Phoenix has 28, by the way.
Planners?
28 planners, at least those of 2015, 2016. Though I know John's much able to parse those things out. Let me just talk a little bit about Site 17, this little project. Again, Tim Boyle, I'm planning and zoning, I was a professor at Columbia Graduate School of Planning and Preservation in New York City. A student there, I was an architect working in the Hamptons and doing projects out there. So I've seen big things, I've seen cities been able to do big things. When I was in New York, they were trying to get the Olympics so that they could reform the entire city, they wanted the space to do that, they wanted to revitalize everything using the Olympics. We have this big chunk of downtown. When I went to the, some of the meetings that I went to, it seems like we're saying, hey, we've got this big chunk, let's, let's make something like this. And I think we've got a very limited imagination to what could go there. I think we need to look in much broader perspective and say, okay, what can go in there? Do we just, like, the survey was like, well, do you want apartments that look like this, or houses that look like this, or buildings that look like this? I was meeting with a teacher over at EBIT, Brian Boulot, he said, well, why not put a giant lagoon there that acts like a public lake, and people can come to like what I saw in Minnesota where I grew up? And I think, well, why not like these big parks in New York that are, have a big water component, have something like that? I'd even think, you know, I guess what I'm trying to say mostly is, let's think outside the box, let's not move too quickly. It's possible that we need a second cornfield in Mesa to compete with the monopoly on picking corn for yourself, and we've got a big lot here for it, so let's just be sure that we're thinking, right? Like he's got a monopoly on it. I guess what I would say then is, I was woefully inspired by the survey. I think there's some issues with the, with the, who's voting on it and everything like that, but I just felt like the vision was so limited in that survey. And I want to say, you know what, let's look at 10 different options that are, that are gonna give us different ideas. If we bring a housing developer in, he'll say one thing, if we bring a Disneyland developer in, he'll say something completely different. And I would say, you know, let's take the time to really get a big, broad look at things, and tell the voters, say, what do you want here? Do you want a giant park? Do you want just a bunch more houses? Do you want some landmark? Do you want a concert center? Do you want something else? I think it's a, it's a big area, downtown is revitalizing, I'm worried that we're, the downtown is starting to come up, starting to revitalize, we've got light rail coming in, we have these other projects coming in, and I think now is just a little too early. So I would, I would recommend, take a little bit more time and really broaden the, the number of developers that we're bringing in to have, to look at this. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, Dee, you're okay? Tim, I think Mr. Freeman has a question.
Tim, are you advocating then getting a master planner in here?
A master planner that has a, that we're giving a broad vision to, saying, you know what, don't just come in and figure out what housing we want in here, a master planner that's, that's really looking kind of on a, on a larger scale.
Okay, thanks.
So Mayor, I think part of the presentation included, that I would suggest, when we do put the plan together, we need to do a feasibility study, so we can determine what is the market absorption for any of these projects. We can, that needs to be a part of the analysis, because we're not gonna attract a developer who doesn't think it pencils out for him. So we'll, we can go, we'll go put the master planner, we'll go get a planner to do the master plan, and then we'll test that and have it, it would be vetted in some kind of a feasibility study also, I think has to be part of this. And we're actually asking the planner, as the master plan, not to come up with one plan, I think we talked about it being three, so we kinda have a range of, within the context of our discussions with the public, and being able to have that, because we recognize no one's gonna be able today hit the bull's eye on exactly what it wants to be five, 10 years from now, but we can have a range of ideas. And then, at least then, when we go out and start talking to the development community, there are, obviously, they all come from different experiences and different expertise, their financing is different in what they're looking for, but at least we can give them the range of planning ideas or thoughts about the visions we're looking for, and then that will, bring that back to council, and back to the community, and talk about, is that what we're looking for? You know, when you're doing planning in open space like this, you're not gonna get a consent, you're not gonna get unanimous consensus on any of this. So we'll bring this back to council, but I think our, really the direction we need from council today is, let us go get a planner to do a master plan that will have kind of about at least three ranges of options that we would like to look at.
Great. Thank you, that's what I understood. Do we need a motion to that effect, or just like some consensus?
As long as it's a consensus direction, if that's where we're going, then we're fine, yeah.
I've heard a few of my council members express support for that, and I want to join with that as well. I think that's the next step here. It'll, we'll continue to engage the public in that process, but I think we need to, I did start to, need to start to coalesce around what's gonna happen. And I think we do need to be sensitive to the practicality. Downtown, in my opinion, what we need is people, and we need people there 24/7, we need people that live there. So I am oriented towards a residential component there myself, but I'm anxious to see what a, what a great planner would come up with for that piece of property. Is it fair to say, Mr. Glover, are you okay with that as well? Is it fair to say that the consensus is to go forward with the, with the developer, the planner?
Yes, I am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, that's what we need.
Okay, thank you. And thanks again, Mr. Boyle, for your service on planning and zoning.
Bigger ideas.
Gotcha. Our next agenda item is to acknowledge receipt of minutes of various boards and committees. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, and a second over here? Pick and choose, whatever. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, any opposed? Next is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Mr. Freeman, I see that you brought some hardware with you today.
I did, Mayor, thank you. Several of us attended the United Food Bank breakfast, and with that, they gave the City of Mesa a Hunger for Hero Award, just for the record, something else can grace your desk. And it was a good time to eat there at the United Food Bank. They put on a very nice breakfast.
It was.
So with that, I'm gonna pass the torch to you.
Oh, thank you very much. And I'm gonna say, that would look really good on your desk, so I'm gonna delegate that to your desk. Yes, that was a great event. Congratulations to United Food Bank, and to our friend Dave Richen's, United Food Bank, he's doing well. Mr. Luna?
Just real quick, I want to give a shout-out to Steve and his gang for Celebrate Mesa. It was a great event, there was a lot of people there, and having it at Ho-Hokam was absolutely a real positive, you know, a positive thing. So thank you, Steve, and all your staff, and for a wonderful event.
Amen to that. I thought Celebrate Mesa was great, it was fun to be on that beautiful grass in Ho-Hokam Park. Just out there walking on that was a lot of fun, but there was a lot of activities there as well. Other events, and anything else we need to talk about? I noticed that I skipped over, I apologize, information relating to current job order contracting projects. Any questions regarding that agenda item? Okay, thank you. The next item is scheduling of meetings and general information. Mr. Brady?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Winkle, I'm sure, we will make sure, we want, we make, want to make sure we let everyone know, that Councilman Winkle is hosting the Desert Wave Invitational this Saturday, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Rose Aquatic Center. So we invite everybody to come out, there'll be, it'll be a flow-rider competition between the, is it Tempe and Mesa?
Tempe Public Safety and Mesa Public Safety.
Public Safety. And the competition is there to raise funds for the 100 Club. So we invite everybody to come out, there'll be hamburgers, hot dogs, and refreshments, so, thank you.
Mesa is the reigning champion, is that right?
It's true, and I heard there's actually, someone's welding an actual trophy this, for this year, so...
Okay. Next item on our agenda is to convene an executive session. Is there a motion to that effect? Mr. Thompson, thank you, and a second.
Thank you.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye will now convene an executive session.